All right.
Kevin's got a state again.
Good name.
I bet he doesn't have any problems with it either.
So Mallory's sharing that. Did you guys get the email that I forwarded to you today?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So. I'm gonna call the meeting order, but we need to determine who's gonna take notes for the meeting today since we no longer currently have a clerk. After this meeting, we won't have a meeting for a while, so we will reduce the committee. And and then we can rope one of them into our. Role. So media come to order. We don't currently have any minutes to approve. Todd?
We have to take our board of health meeting out of recess.
Okay.
Before we can get in, if you want to hold on.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Three minutes, good?
All right. Okay. I was just trying to move. Are we good to go now? Are we all set?
All set? Todd?
No. No, we're coming out of recess right now. Okay. Good evening, everyone. The board of health will now come out of recess. We have a. Recorded meeting with the finance committee. So we'll let them get started and. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you. Okay, so. We don't currently have any minutes to approve. Well. I'm gonna gather those, the last ones from CJ, and and we'll finalize those. Pete, can you just take notes for today? Perfect, thank you. So. Correspondents, we have numerous end of year transfers. And. Too numerous, in my opinion, for the end of the year that and we'll have some discussion on that. But I just want to confirm that you guys got the email that I forwarded to you. In regards to the board of health today. And then. I think I think that's the only one that I had forwarded prior to this, other than the ones that Mallory copied everyone on. So so the first one is a transfer request from the reserve fund of $961.17, which is the final settlement for one member of the union not included in the original calculation of retro pay. So Chris, what is our, before we go, what is our current balance in the reserve fund?
It was roughly $47,550. That's my recollection. I just looked at it earlier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mallory, is there anything? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but is if you just wanna add some color?
Yeah, so this is, this was the first article on our special town meeting, and you guys went a little rogue on me, and I didn't know you were gonna vote this way. So now we actually need you to just authorize this. This is more of a formality. You voted on this in your meeting before. Town meeting to recommend it come from the fund transfer, but the town can't really vote on that. That has to come from the finance committee. So this one is a formality.
All right, so this is, I think we discussed this at that meeting before the town meeting, so.
Yes, yeah.
Is there, is there a motion to transfer $961.17 from the reserve account? To the fire department prior year retro pay?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? All is opposed, I would be recorded in favor because we only have. Just so you guys know, our votes have to be unanimous, or they don't pass because we are a seven-member board, and we only have four members right now. So. So that will be my four to zero vote. So Mallory, can you pull up the next transfer request?
Sure. The one from the reserve fund that I emailed today or the next transfer, sorry.
Just whatever order you wanna go in, it doesn't really matter.
Well, while we're talking about the reserve fund, we had figured out that there was an overdrawn account in the assessors' office. The assessors' office has switched over their. All of their documents for the state because the state was removing some of their programming. And in doing so, there was a huge snafu with condos not being condos and second floors not being recorded appropriately. So Carol had asked, excuse me, the assessor had asked for overtime. This is before the pandemic occurred. Overtime allowances for the two members of that office to come in on Fridays primarily to do some work in that regard. They're not finished. But she did go over in their salary accounts, personnel accounts.
So. I I know it's it's fix a one half a dozen and the other, but why are requests like this being done as transfers from the reserve account and not? From available funds like we can do end of year transfers up to 5% out of another account?
Actually, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the five, there is no, there's no longer a restriction on those year-end transfers between. Either intra-departmentally or inter-departmentally.
Yeah.
But the reserve fund, I mean, because this request was filled out today, the selectmen had already met and authorized. The year-end transfers, so I just thought it were, it was appropriate to seek a reserve fund transfer, knowing we only needed. The finance committee to sign off on it. And based on the dollar amount, I didn't think it would, it would be, you know, inappropriate.
Okay, that's that's fine. That's fine. Anybody have any questions on that? It makes, it makes sense, but I was just wondering, that's why, why we didn't do it that way.
That would be the only, if I, if I, if if I were in better control of where the assessors' office budget would have been a week ago. It would have been, it would have been a year-end transfer request. We probably could have even transferred. Internally within the assessors' budget. We could have just moved money out of their expense accounts to cover the shortfall on the, in the personnel accounts.
Okay. Your motion to approve the $500 request from the reserve fund? Will you make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
This is the next one.
So this is just the transfer from?
From the police department into the board of selectmen's $6,000, the commingled billing. I think I talked to you about this during the budget, that the selectmen's office took on the phone system. In the police department, which we were not planning on doing, but because it was such a headache to split the bill up with Comcast, we just took it. Anticipating this reserve transfer.
All right, so do you know this, this energy line that we're taking, that we had $6,000, $6,000 left to take out of, is that? Building energy or is that fuel?
So the police department, that's building energy. And the selectmen's. Public buildings account also took care of the police department's energy costs. So there was nothing expended from that line. In the police budget.
Is that being adjusted in FY21 that the energy cost will now be labeled to the police department or?
I believe we lowered it, and we also lowered, he had requested something for like irrigation. We lowered that substantially, so. Two of his lines were reduced. Did you hear me? Sorry.
I can't. I was, I was thinking. On the communications, on the board of selectmen, is that, I know we talked about it, but just refresh my memory. So in FY21. They'll no longer be commingled, or is it always gonna be commingled?
The phone systems, you mean? The phone, yes, I believe they're always gonna be commingled.
All right, so we can. And you, and since I don't have the budget in front of me, we funded that at a level that we won't have to do this again next year?
Actually, I'm not sure on that, but we have spreadsheets that we follow, so when we get closer to a potential fall town meeting, I'll be able to see. Monthly average, what our costs are, and then take care of it. But I'm not positive on it. I think it might be a little short by a few thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions on that? Pete, Robert, Kevin? My motion to recommend a transfer of $6,000 from police department, 5210, to board of selectmen, communications, 5341.
A move.
Is there a second? On discussion, hearing none, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Similar situation here, Mallory, into the community.
Right. Yep. What happened was Leanne didn't put them all into the same. She did each account separately.
Okay, so Chris, I just have a question on the, we're using health insurance transfer here. Do you know what the remaining balance is currently that's gonna be left over in that line at the end of the year?
Yeah, so it's gonna be pretty tight. As a matter of fact, after, if if all of the transfers are approved tonight, there'll be about $7,000 left in that budget. That's just, that's my recollection. I was just looking at this this afternoon.
So, so how many requests are there to take to transfer out of the health insurance line?
One.
I, I, I just don't have them all in front of me to say that, so.
There are four requests. They're totaling, they got a total of about $78,000. There's $83,000 currently in that budget remaining. Mary has no additional bills outstanding. With the insurance carrier for the rest of fiscal 20. All the bills are always paid at the beginning of the month. So if any bill she's paying right now are all related to fiscal 21, effectively representing July's cost of health insurance for the employees.
Okay. What is, Mallory, do you know what our? Per person contribution cost is for, for an individual per year?
For an individual plan?
Now, just roughly what our average cost that we pay, because is this, is $83,000, one employee, two employees, three employees? Because I know we always budget to have an extra employee or two.
Yes.
How many is this?
I would, Ed, if I, I'm sorry, Mallory, if I may.
Yep.
It's roughly, my recollection is the town share for, for a basic, I'm gonna say family plan, Ed, $16,000 for the year. So you're talking about five employees, roughly.
That's her average. She generally accounts for five additional employees every year.
Hi, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure, just because I think this is the first time we've taken this substantial amount of money out of the end of the year on, from health insurance.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, is there a motion or is any question on that? Is there a motion to recommend a transfer of $10,000 from benefits health insurance to the communications commingled billing line? Second?
Second.
On discussion, Mallory, just make sure that we really look at this communications line for the fall. I wanna, I don't wanna end up doing this again at the end of next year if we don't have to.
Absolutely. We probably need to put in like $16,000.
Okay. Okay. Motion made, seconded, all is in favor? All is opposed, the eyes have it. So. Mallory, can you be forward, because these are, I think there's a whole bunch of these ones. What is the total of this vacation sick buyback? Transferring that we're gonna be doing?
Entire amount's around $48,000 and some change.
What do, on a normal basis, how much do we usually end up, do we at the end of the?
The only department that, or the only employees that have this by right in their contract. Actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, the only employees that have this by right in their contract to buy back vacation time are police and fire. And generally, there's probably about five from each department that do it every year. The extension of this to more employees. Is very few and far between. I don't believe we've ever done it. Like, it's usually always benefit, excuse me, scheduled or budgeted because they know that it's coming. It'll be like a retirement.
Yeah.
Some planned circumstance. And so actually, that's where all of these funds are coming from, with the exception of maybe $2,000. We had anticipated a retirement in the accounting office that was funded, and she's still with us, which we're happy about. But there was this money left over, so that's why accounting is funding these, the accounting department is funding these buybacks.
So are these all buybacks to people who are non-contract, not, not under a contract?
No.
So how does that work when you have a contract, when you have a union, a union negotiated contract? And now you're throwing, you're doing something that's outside of the contract?
Because it's not taking a benefit away. They're extending a benefit, and they're doing it townwide, so there's no, every, every employee was eligible for this.
So the town didn't ask to impact bargain by giving something else away?
I don't know what you mean by giving something else away, but the town did not ask to impact bargain.
Additional benefit, I'll put it on the other foot. If we were asking them, because something came up, to take away a personal day. The union would ask to impact bargain.
Correct.
Now we're offering up an additional benefit with no benefit back to man, to, to, to the town.
The argument made by the board of selectmen was that it was removing a unfunded liability. That's what they called it.
Yeah, but no one told people they didn't have, they couldn't take their vacation time, right? Or are these people that were required under the situation that we're in to not take vacation time?
No one was required to not take vacation time.
They have the option of carrying it forward?
They have the option of carrying forward two weeks, which is actually something that happens all the time. No matter what crisis might be happening, there's always that benefit, and it's capped at two weeks. So originally, the discussion was. To, my recommendation was to allow everybody to carry over as much vacation time as they had on the books into the next fiscal year. And then that morphed into a conversation of allowing people to buy it back. Or allowing people to cash it in. For various reasons that the selectmen cited, they chose to allow this.
So what happens if the finance committee doesn't recommend this transfer?
I think the town is obligated to pay it regardless, so they would have to go back to the drawing board. Chris and I would go back to the drawing board about how to fund it, and it would be an old bill, and we'd have to go to town meeting, I am assuming, but. We are obligated because vacation is an earned benefit. So we're in a bit of a corner. Or we would, I guess the counter would be that whatever time they had on the books would be restored to their allotted time. Does that make sense? Like, to be used for FY21, that's an option?
I wanna hear what the rest of the committee has to say. I, I, I have a, I have a feeling on this, but I'm not gonna hold it up. If, 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 if. If we think it's the right, I, I just wanted it to be clear that, you know, and Mallory, I'm not saying anything, I haven't told you already that.
Absolutely.
People should have taken their time off. They would, you know. It, we're, yes, we're in a different period. Yes, where, you know, lots of people are working from home. So.
People did take their time. I just, this, what ended up being the end result was a mix of most people carrying over their time. Maybe a few people using and exhausting all of their time, and then the other few people buying back anything in excess of two weeks. Or just making the option to buy back in its entirety. So there, we did, I heard you guys loud and clear at your, it was one of your budget meetings, and so. I did start spreading the word that the finance committee was urging people to actually take it, and there were a lot of folks who did take it.
I, I just think that, that, that setting a bad precedent.
I do not disagree. Right.
My two cents, the same, same thing, is that. If, if higher police. People that had to, that couldn't take vacation, that I understand. I mean, even for everybody else. I mean, we, we told people, go take your vacation, go.
Yeah, I, you know. I'm strug, I'm really struggling with this one. You know, I know now we cut it back from what it significantly could have been.
Yes.
But, you know. None of the selectmen are on the call, right?
Correct.
Ed?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
So, so if I understand this correctly. A couple of the unions have this as a benefit, so now we have to offer it to everybody in town?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So what the conversation was, was talking about, we started off saying, I brought it to the selectmen and said. My recommendation to you is that we carry over, we allow employees to carry over all of their vacation time that they have on the books into the next fiscal year, period. And then have, I had recommended that it would then expire June 30th, 2021. So they had a whole full year to use the, the FY20 vacation. And then they would also have their FY21 vacation, which amounts to a lot of vacation for one year, but it was to recognize that it wouldn't be going away. At those, there were a series of two meetings. One of the selectmen stated that it was an unfunded liability to carry in all of that vacation time into the next fiscal year, and that it would end up being paid out at an increased rate. And so the conversation turned to allowing people the option, no matter what you were, contracted, non-union, whatever. You can opt to carry over as much vacation time as you want, or you can pay it back, you can do a, or buy it back, you can do a. Combination of the two. And so. People picked, picked what they wanted to do, and then this is a result of that. The whole liability started out was like $180,000. And at the end of the day, it's a $48,000 price tag and some change. Let's call it 49.
Okay, so this is a benefit that they didn't have the previous fiscal year?
Correct, and they don't have now either. This was a COVID-19-related decision. And that they were handling just this just now due to the, you know, travel restrictions, the shutdowns, the inability for us to actually use vacation. We closed our doors, things like that. And it was clear that it was not meant to continue into a future.
Yeah.
Discussion, a future year.
Yeah, then I kinda side with Ed on that as well, then. If that's the case, I, I think it's setting a bad precedent as well.
Right.
Yep, I'm with you on that. I mean, because of COVID and a lot of other things going on, we're gonna have less money coming in.
Yeah.
So, you know, the town's gonna feel the effect, and unfortunately, even in the private sector, people are feeling the effect, and everyone has to grin and bear it. It's just, that's. It's an unfortunate circumstance.
So Mallory, what's the total of the, and how many, how many transfers are there for this?
For this?
Yeah.
Three. Three?
I, I've got five.
Oh, five, I'm sorry, four, five, four, five, yep.
And what's the total?
Total is roughly $10,000, Mr. Chairman.
So.
Forty-eight was the total liability. I'm sorry, I was giving you the total liability. I apologize, Chris.
So. So. Where, how, the, the total of 10,000, but the total payout is 48?
Townwide, yes.
So where's the other 38 coming from?
So the, if I may, so there are, there are other budgets that already had buyback provisions, or, or there were budgets in the, in, in the, in the existing. Operating budgets, primarily, the biggest one was the police department. They have over $83,000 set aside specifically for vacation buyback.
Yeah, but that, that was left there for a specific reason. Wasn't, wasn't for this reason, which would have done someone that was retiring. So.
Not having been there when the budget was put together, I, I venture to say probably not, that it was specifically for folks that are retiring. But if, 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 if it matters, if it's even germane to the discussion right now, if you were to look at the, if you were to look at the financial statements at June 30, 19. We do, the town carries a liability in the financial statements for unused sick and vacation time.
Understood, understood. But that's why.
That liability doesn't go away.
That's why we require the notice that we require of someone that's retiring, so we can plan for it in an individual, in, in, in an individual year, because. There's no community that can plan to have that, that part of the unfunded liability. Sitting in an account. Year after year, that it just doesn't happen.
Agreed. I mean, typically, if.
With this, the, the, the vacation, sick time and vacation buybacks for when someone retires, that's why. I know the town has done a better job over the last few years of renegotiating the contracts to cap that liability, because it used to be a lot more. So. I, I'm, I'm a little disappointed to hear that. That we're doing these transfers, but we are gonna use a significant amount of money that was in that police department budget. To cover the rest of the liability, because. That, at the end of the day, was funded for a specific purpose that didn't take place, would have reverted back to free cash. For us to utilize in a better manner that would help us in, in the future difficult times that we're gonna have, so. You know, I think I've made it pretty clear. I'm not gonna object. To this last $10,000 of transfers. I don't wanna hold it up and cause all of that, considering the rest of it's gonna be paid somewhere else. That we don't really have a control over, but I'm kinda disappointed in that.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification?
Yeah.
So the police department's budget that they have for sick and vacation buyback is not making up the rest of it. There are other budgets. Fire and ambulance also had buy, so there were other budgets that already had provisions. For buyback for the same reason that the police department did. Ordinarily, I don't disagree with you. These would be retirement benefits. These are not typical benefits of, of current employees. Ordinarily, you would see this stuff go away, and you're, and you're right, you would see a cap. This is highly unusual. I, I, I haven't experienced this in any other communities either that I've audited or worked for. I typically see this as a retirement benefit. So anyway, the, the $10,000 of transfers are into departments that didn't have any provision in their budget for these buybacks. They weren't there.
So, so if we don't recommend these transfers, then we are really just affecting the, these smaller departments outside of the.
Yes.
Yes.
A significant, which is the smallest portion of the entire. Program. All right, so I'm gonna begrudgingly, can, so do we have to do them individually?
No, you can group them. You can group them.
All right. Mallory, I just ask that you please bring back. The comments back to the board of selectmen, that the finance committee does not want to be put in this situation ever again, and that we'd like to be discussed with. As, before they finalize something that they think is a liability that needs to be taken care of. I know it's extraordinary times. But we set ourselves up for issues in the long term when you do it once. I get it, you negotiate the contract at the beginning, and it's in certain contracts, but if it's not in certain contracts, this willy-nilly stuff. Is gonna get people in trouble in the long term and cost the taxpayers more money.
I will share them, yes.
Thank you. So I would recommend that we make the transfers as submitted here for the benefit vacation buyback to this, and, and that it be noted that this is a one-time. Noted buyback for FY20. Begrudgingly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, if it's germane to the, to the topic here, the total of the, of the five transfers comes to 10,48324.
So, so noted as part of my, the recommendation. So is there a motion on that?
A move.
Is there a second? Robert's seconded, Pete, even though he's still on mute.
I, I saw that too.
There you go.
On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it.
Um.
Oh, so this, so this is the transfer out of that health insurance. We obviously came up short in the Medicare this year. So. At least they stay within the same family. Is there a motion to recommend a transfer from the benefits health insurance, the benefits Medicare, 5174 to 5176, an amount of $10,000?
One moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it.
This was included, Chris, in your 10,000, right?
That's correct.
The library.
Same with the Board of Assessors.
Yeah. All right. This is the next one. It's relative to the animal control vehicle. We did everything we could to get a smaller price tag on this. I think everyone here knows the backstory on this with the cruiser crash and how it derailed all of our plans. Side note, the van is lettered and looks beautiful. If you see it driving around, it looks great. But it was a little bit more than we had anticipated, because it was gonna be free, and then it wasn't. So this is same family still, police department funding this.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend the transfer of $4,000 from the Energy Line 5210 in the Police Department to Animal Control 5850 for additional equipment for the, to replace vehicle in the Animal Control Department? I'm, I'm good that it came from the Police Department to Animal Control, since it was the accident in the Police Department derailed some of the.
Plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it.
Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, what am I looking at here?
This is, this is.
Oh, this is it, okay, so.
Getting the Health Department stuff, right? Is that all that we have left is Board of Health stuff?
I'm just double checking, yes, these. Oh, the one, this is the HVAC stuff that the Board of Selectmen voted to encumber against the FY 20. So we're moving it out of building and liability insurance into public buildings to pay for it. And I'm out to bid right now, in case anybody's an HVAC person and wants to bid. They're due on the 22nd at 2:00 PM.
Yep, so just so for everyone's edification, the HVAC system, the boiler, was it the boiler at Town Hall, Mallory?
Yes, yep. It broke.
Needs to be upgraded slash replaced. And so it was an unanticipated expenditure. But since we can do it as an end of the year, there, there's some remaining funds in the, in the Building and Liability Insurance line. So they're gonna encumber the funds and get it done right after July 1st, utilizing funds from FY 20. So it's not something that we have to have a special in order to make the repair. So is there a motion to recommend the transfer of 23,000 from Building and Liability Insurance 5740 to Public Buildings, Building Repairs and Maintenance 5250 in the amount of $23,000?
Second.
On discussion, all is in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it. So.
All right, this is the other, the last one before Board of Health, the fire chief, he's taking it from ambulance, went over slightly in overtime.
Yeah, so was some of that because it wasn't taken out of the ambulance salary line when it should have been?
Uh, if, oh, sorry.
Nope, no, I was just gonna say, we looked into it, and I handed over to you.
No, that's fine. Ed, as far as I know, nothing's been misclassified as far as any overtime is concerned. You know, we did a research and everything, as far as the paperwork that was submitted during the payroll process, it looked like everything is classified correctly.
I think what happened here is because the fire department, they'll work a two-day shift, sometimes the fiscal year will have an extra week, like 53 instead of 52 and whatever, but an extra full week because they only work the two dates, you know, the two days, the 24-hour shift. And so Chris and I had a, Chief McGee and I had a conversation about it, and I said, whenever I'm calculating estimates for fire, I just do 53 weeks, because people can get an extra week in there, because it's just two days. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
But, but that would say that we're spending $19,000 in an extra week in overtime.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That my argument holds any water, but.
It's a pretty significant amount, and, you know, I know, we, we just have to have a better control of that. You know, and we're gonna talk about some of that, Mallory. I know you sent me, sent out that note on controls and looking at it, but in general, I think we had too many surprises at the end of this year that we haven't had in the past. So we need to do a better job on how we, we look at that. And I know things come up, and it was a, it's a different year and a different way that we, you know, things have fallen into, but usually these transfers are like $1,500, $2,500, you know, they're here, they're there. I mean, we have some significant transfers at the end of the year. Luckily, we're in a pretty good financial situation that we can do them. But, you know, it's, next year probably not gonna be as good as this year, so we need to know whether it's us, you know, reviewing, us, us as a finance committee getting back to reviewing them on a monthly basis or a bimonthly basis, but I just think we, we need, we need to tighten it up a little bit.
Agreed.
Can I interject something here? The, the, we're transferring out 38,000 and receiving 39,000.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I, I apologize to the, to the committee. I made, there's a math error on the transfer out. There should be 19.5 coming out, not the 18,000, not the 18.5 coming out? So the, um, sorry, I apologize.
I thought it says 19.5.
Sorry, so I'm off $1,000 of my math right now. That's not a good thing for an accountant. So I'm, I'm increased, so the first, the first transfer out of the part-time salary line item 5131 in ambulance should be $5,000, not $4,000. And then the total of the three will total 19.5.
This should be 5,000, oops.
Yeah, that, that first one.
The first, not that one, the one above it, Mallory.
That one, yeah, that should be $5,000.
I think I'm also gonna work on a new form while we're busy improving all this stuff. I hate this form.
Um, so, sorry, just, just for the, just for the benefit of the Finance Committee. So when I look, I went back and looked at bottom-line personnel expenses for the fire department at the end of May. And at the end of May, the fire chief was to the good $52,000 in the aggregate. And in, and in basically four weeks plus a couple days' times, not, you know, he managed to spend all $52,000. You know, they would have roughly averaged about, about $10,000 a week in, in regular pay. So it, you know, I, I can't tell you why exactly, you know, overtime went crazy for the month of June. It just, if, if, if I were to show you where Chris, you know, where the chief was at the end of May, and showed you what his weekly, you know, average weekly payroll was, you know, I would have guessed at the end of May that he would have been fine. That, that would have been his best guess at the time. You know, what happened in the month of June? Tough to say right now.
Yeah, and, and I am, I am all about, hey, if it happens, it happens, but I am and, and, and we get that, hey, it's been a tough couple of months, but I am all about no surprises. And I just feel that there were a lot of surprises this year.
I, I, I would have to admit, Ed, that this, this was a, this was a surprise.
So, and, and I will, you know, I'll, I'll save that for later on. I'll save my next comment for later on. So is there a motion to recommend a transfer of 19,500 from the accounts listed on the transfer sheet out of the ambulance fund to the fire department budget to cover the shortfall in the overtime?
One move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it. So now, Board of Health, thanks for waiting. Appreciate it. So, um, so you guys wanna just discuss a little bit of, of what is going on here, because it's a significant amount of money and well, not just to you guys, but in general. And, and I had this discussion with Mallory too, that for the last three months, and this is what kind of bothers me with a lot of what we've gone through tonight, is we're in a spending freeze, and we all of a sudden have all these expenditures at the end of the year, and we've all gone through these processes. And I'm not directing this just at you, Board of Health, just so you know, but we're getting to, to yours now, and you, and you guys are in the room. But just like I said a couple of minutes ago, the, we've never had surprises like this, and I don't know what happened for us to get this significant a surprises. Most of you sat through our budget hearings, when we talked about everybody's budgets. And if, if there were other departments on this call right now, are you saying the same thing to them? No one talked to us about anything that was gonna happen at the end of the year that we were gonna walk into, you know, even this, that, that vacation benefit, I thought we were pretty clear on how we felt about it, but, you know. So I, I'm gonna give you guys the floor to talk about it, and then we'll talk about the transfers. We, you know, we know we have to figure it out. But how do we do better going forward, so we don't end up in this situation again? I think that's where we want to be. How do we do better, so we don't end up in these situations? And then, but first, we have to identify what caught, the cause of it, so we don't let it happen again. So, so Mallory, I don't know if you want to start, or you want to turn it over to the Board of Health?
Um, I will just turn it over to the Board of Health. I, I echo your sentiments. I've reached out to them already. I've shared some ideas on how to prevent this from happening ever again. And this would be townwide. It wouldn't just be, as you say, it wouldn't just be for this department. And so I've had conversations with Chris Lavilla as well, and we plan to make changes and improvements on our process.
All right, so I don't know, Tom, if you want to lead the discussion?
You can't see me, I don't think. Our biggest problem was the contractor, Borges. This was the first year of a contract for us that was drafted up and amended to fit the needs of the town for what we wanted to do. It was a process, and we finally got it done towards the end of May. When we had our budget meetings, we had allowed 3% for both curbside pickup of trash and 3% for our curbside pickup of recycling. Those amounts, we did not anticipate they would be that high. However, when we finally got the final number in from Borges, when he was awarded the contract, on the trash rubbish pickup, curbside pickup was at 16.2%, and the recycling was at 36.3%. And that was fine and well. However, for some reason, at such a late day, we either, or I either forgot to bring it to your attention or to update the budget prior to town meeting. So, so that particular item amounted to over $64,000. The different, in, difference in budget. Another large item, well, not that large, but it amounted to the vicinity of $8,000. When COVID started in March and everyone was at home, our pickup, our trash pickup increased about 20% or better. Borges said it was like 23, but. So that, we had allowed historically 1,600, I mean, 1,600 tons. And that was a 10-year average. So during the three-month period that we looked at, during the COVID period, and it's still going on, we were 117 tons over what we were supposed to be, what we anticipated. And that's at 74.51 a ton. That's for the burning of the trash that's picked up. So that came to about $8,000. The household hazardous waste today, we had a budget carried forward of $7,309. At 11 o'clock in the, by the way, we had about 165 vehicles to that event. We, we hit our budget about 11 o'clock in the morning, and the cars were still outside on Tremont Street and wrapped around the transfer station. When Clean Harbors came and asked me, do we want to cut it off? So I didn't see any way that we could just say stop and send everybody back home. So that amounted to a little over $3,000. And I gotta give you some figures about our bulky item pickup. Last year, we, just to give you an idea of how much volume there was, last year we collected $900. I'm not quite sure how many stickers were sold, but this year we sold a little 400, and the revenue generated from that was $5,500 versus 900 last year. So that ended up basically giving us a whole lot of electronics, tires, et cetera, in our hazardous waste disposal budget that we needed to get rid of because of the volume. So that came to another couple of thousand dollars. So all said and done, I mean, I'm not gonna count the additional hours, because that was covered by FEP and CARES. So if, basically, if it wasn't for the contract that didn't get updated prior to town meeting, it would have been, I don't know, eight, 11, $13,000 off. I think a lot of the, a lot of the additional came from people being home. It went through their homes. We had a substantial amount of pickup, and we need to get rid of it. So pretty much that's it.
All right, all right, so I have a question. I, I, the, the stuff below, the, the curbside tonnage, I get that people are home more. I get that the hazardous waste, the tires are wasted, all that. But I, I need to understand on the contract. So throughout the entire FY 20, we did not have a contract? What were we working off of for a number for FY 20?
We were working off the 3% that we added and not the 36%.
How, how do we not have a contract for the entire fiscal year?
We did have a contract, Mr. Piers.
That's what I'm saying, we did have a contract. We, we had a contract that we budgeted at 3% and not at the 36% or the 16%.
Contract was signed a month before the start of 20.
The contract was signed. So we, so we went through a special town meeting in October. After, so I get it that it wasn't voted on at annual town meeting, because the contract wasn't signed. But we went through a special town meeting in October, when we finalized the budget, and it was never brought to our attention that we needed to increase rubbish and recycling, nor through the entire budget process in the spring this time, did we know, because we probably would have put this on the special prior to the annual. Or we could have addressed it, because obviously, you know, the, the, it would have, it would have been adjusted in the tax rate last year, as it should have been, because it's a tax service that gets paid for partially through taxes if we had known prior to the special town meeting in the fall, last year's Fall Town Meeting, that we would have increased the levy to match that increase. So my question is, how did we, or where did a notification not come through to notify that that budget was underfunded? Because we should have known that it was underfunded going into annual town meeting last year because we signed a contract a month before. So what happened in those seven months and then the, the post-five months that we didn't know about this? I, I don't, I, I'm trying to understand.
We were, if you look at the percentage of expenditures in the budget, we were somewhere in the vicinity of 50%, which, when you look at the percentage spent, that's in the ballpark. Uh, I think when I finally realized how shot we were was March, which is after the fact, so.
Yeah, but, but Tom, like I'm saying, even in March, we could have addressed it at special town meeting. We shouldn't have to have done it as a transfer at the end of the year. Because now, what, you, we're taking funds that we didn't, that we could have, we could have figured out a different way that happened to wait till before we closed the year out. We shouldn't be looking at, just like I questioned the fire chief, $19,000. We shouldn't be looking at over expenditures of 20, $30,000 in our transfers at the end of the year. They should be, if we budgeted right. They, all of these other things, you can't, we can't account that, uh, people are going to be home for four months, that our tonnage was going to go so much, that hazardous waste day was going to be that much higher. Those things, I, I get, I can totally, those are things that we should have to do at the end of a year transfer. We should not know for 12 months or eight months that our contract went up significantly more than what we budgeted. And, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to point fingers, but people have to accept responsibility for, and, and there's, and there's probably responsibility to go around for numerous people, but that's what I talked about, putting a better control in. And I don't know where it fell down and, you know, that's up to Mallory and the Board of Selectmen to figure that out and, uh, and make some recommendations to fix the process, so.
She's literally sent a recommendation to us moving forward. Certainly we'll do a better job at monitoring, but, uh, I'm not out to point fingers at anybody. As you said, there's probably a lot of finger pointing to go around. You know, but ultimately is my responsibility and I'm going to take the responsibility. I was not under the impression we could have a special town meeting in, in the spring to, to take care of this. It seemed to me if people had money at the end of the year, we could do a transfer. I understand where you're coming from and I understand what you said, but you know what? Live and learn.
Yeah, but, but it's a determination that, that needs to be made by the financial team and the financial team needs to know whether it's, and, and I'll, if, if it's changing the controls in the accounting department to have that contract in play and know and, and review it or from a, from, from Mallory's standpoint as the procurement officer to know those, those contracts. I don't know where it is, but you know.
The thing is, is that we had no accountant at the time. So, you know.
Ed, I think one of the controls we can do is, uh, monthly, we can look at all the type of budget, see where we stand.
That's what we're doing.
I know, but collectively, and then it's pretty revised. See if we notice that we're underfunded, we're underbudgeted, uh, we can, um, make decisions. Maybe it's not the right time to.
Can, can I ask a question? So Chris, I know you send out end-of-month budget updates to, to each of, I know you send us our end-of-month stuff. How does it go to each board? Do they get detailed where each line is spent?
Um, yeah. Sorry, so Ed, I just say, the report that you get that summarize, it's basically a summary by line item. Every department gets a summary by line item. But I got to tell you, as I'm looking at the reports as an accountant, I'm not concerned about individual line items. My concern is bottom line personnel, bottom line expenses, because we know that that's really where the crux is at. It really is incumbent upon each department to worry about the individual line items. Um, so that they can tell where they're gonna.
I agree 100%.
That's where they're gonna tell if they have a problem. Now.
Fill their budgets, that's how they're supposed to manage it. They're supposed to manage it to the line. And if there's things like additional household hazardous waste, that's a different story. Or curb, trash tonnage, that's a different story. But we, it's up to the departments to manage their line items. That's, that's, that's the, that is the role of a department head or the financial person within each department.
Typically, one of the controls that's in place during procurement is that the accounting officer will sign off as to the availability of funds. Um, there wasn't any, based on my review of the contract, and this is, again, this is not to point fingers in any one direction or suggest that somebody did anything inappropriately, but there, nobody had signed off as to the availability of funds.
Yeah.
On the contract.
So, so before I jump in anything, anyone else have anything they want to add?
How long is this contract for?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The current contract, how long is it for now?
It's a three, I believe it's a three-year contract right now, the end of fiscal '22.
There's two more years left in it, yep.
And, and I don't have the current either, but we're, we've.
Actually, I've already checked, oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
So I've checked, I've checked the fiscal '21 contract requirements and I've checked it against the '21 budget. It's right to the penny for recycling and for rubbish collection.
Okay. Well, that's good. How about on the, um, did we increase the, uh, the FY '21 budget? Did we increase, uh, our estimated on the tonnage? Or are we, or what did we base our number on the tonnage for FY '21?
What did we put in?
Um, I don't remember exactly how much we did, but we've been running the projections. So we were able to, that's how we got to 1,600 for this year. So I don't remember, we might have used like 16, 10 or 16, 20, but we didn't use 17,000.
Robert, Kevin, you have anything you want to add?
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, one of the things that we're going to be putting into place is a lot of this happened in, in the last probably two weeks of June. We had a bulky item pickup, we had our household hazardous waste day. Uh, people were home. Uh, going forward, we're going to make sure all these items are done probably by the end of April. The bulky item pickup, household hazardous waste day, if we have one next year. So that way there, we're not getting all these bills, uh, at the end of the year. And we'll monitor the budget in those areas, uh, better, period.
Perfect. So, uh, question, Mallory, on the, um, additional overtime hours and, and on that number, is that reimbursable under the CARES Act?
Yes, it can be, that can be COVID. I believe all their overtime, um, because we did not allow anybody to do overtime unless like approved and, um, it was COVID related. So all of their overtime would be, um, eligible for reimbursement. The CARES Act is much simpler than FEMA. So CARES is giving the 25%. Usually FEMA reimburses at 75% and the town eats the 25. So CARES is providing the 25% and then FEMA fills in the blanks there. So we've already received some money through CARES and then this would be added to our FY '21 grant round for them. But yes, it will be on there.
So while we're talking CARES, huh, how much CARES did we receive that falls under the FY '20 revenues?
We requested, uh, 19,000 and some change. I don't have the exact figures and got 7,000 and some change back.
Okay.
Because not all the expenses, and it's very silly, but not all of the expenses under the CARES Act are actually FEMA reimbursable. So there's like a weird formula going on there, but I, I can get you the exact numbers and send them in.
Alright, alright, thanks. Alright, so, um, I guess we can, Robert, do you have anything?
No, I think it's all been, all been answered.
Okay, alright, so let's go back to now, uh, we're responsible for it. So let's go back to how we're going to fund it.
I'm sorry, hold on.
And then Mallory, after we do this, can you share with us what some of the plans or controls are going forward?
Uh, sure. I'm sorry, right now?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
Let us do the transfers first.
Sorry.
So is there a recommendation to transfer $13,000 from Health Benefits 5174 to the Board of Health 13,000 as listed on the transfer sheet?
13,300?
Uh, yeah, 50, uh, 50, yeah. Well, 3,400 goes to 5,300.
Just a total of, total of 13, 3.
Yeah, and 5295, I think that's a five, gets 2,700. I'll set, I'll set that, Pete?
Yeah.
There's a motion to tran, make the transfer, recommend the transfer.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, hearing that all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. The next one is to transfer $44,750 from Health Benefits 5174 to Board of Health for $37,750 to 5291, $5,100 to 5292 Collection and $1,900 to, uh, 5294 C-Mass Acceptance Fee. Is there a motion to recommend the transfer?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, hearing that all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Next one is to transfer $15,000 from Communications, Salary Operator's Pot Time to, uh, 50, from 5106 to Board of Health Recycling Collection 5292. Is there a motion to recommend?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, hearing that all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it.
I think that's it, actually. Um, Chris, did I miss anything?
Oh, you've got, we've, we've addressed all the current transfer requests.
So, so Chris, I have, I have a quick question, Chris, just, I know you brought it up earlier. So there is no longer that cap on what you can transfer from one?
That's correct. The, the municipal monetization act, there used to be a 3% cap. They, uh, the state of Massachusetts, when they passed the municipal monetization act, we removed the cap. Um, again, sort of giving the towns the same flexibility that most school departments have, moving money within, you know, with internally within the school budget. Um, the 3% cap, quite frankly, was, um, was, was sort of antiquated. And the idea being is that town meeting typically would get the opportu, opportunity to weigh in back when everybody used to vote right down to the paperclip. But when you're voting now, you know, bottom line personnel, bottom line expenses by department, um, that, that 3% really is kind of restrictive to the town. And if it means that you don't have to close the books with a deficit or to fund it from free cash, like a lot of communities will have to do so that they close the books clean, um, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Um, admittedly, I think the Board of Health matter, um, had it been addressed in October, would have allowed you to raise some additional taxation to call, you know, to, to cover the difference. Um, if it's, if it's, if any consequence, at least you have money left over from the taxes you did collect to take care of the shortfall. But yeah, it, it, it has an impact.
So, so I'm going to, uh, I'm going to make my, my final comment on this and now I'll leave it to Mallory. Because I, I chalked this up to somewhat of a learning experience because we've had one changes. And, uh, when new people come in, they operate differently than other people. And I think, um, the addressing of the controls should help on that. I think that, um, there may have been some freewheeling that was allowed in the past that, um, need to be reined back in a little bit in general, that, um, people need to understand what true roles are and we need to define them better. And, uh, you know, uh, I just think that there's enough to, for everybody to learn from this, that, uh, that, that we, we can, um, take it that way and hopefully it never happens again that we end up sitting here having to make almost, what, $100,000 in transfers at the end of the year. That's not healthy for our budget to have to do that. It's not good for our budgeting process to have to transfer $100,000 at the end of the year. So, uh, if people are looking at their line items, and I, and I say this, that really that message needs, that if the next department head meeting needs to really come across that there, there, it's going to be a tough year and a tough couple of years. There's no way we can sit here and do this at the end of next year. We'll be, you know, we have a really good bond rating and we have really good fiscal, uh, fiscal health right now. It won't stay that way if we have to do things like this more often. That's my two cents. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and then Mallory, yes.
Well, if we're all set, and I appreciate your time and understanding, uh, we're going to return back to our regular meeting.
Sure, we're, we're almost done. I was just going to wrap up, let Mallory talk about any of the controls if you guys want to hear it.
Sure, we'll wait for you.
Before you jump off, it'll only be a couple of minutes, Tom. So, thanks.
Thank you, I will be quick, Mr. Pyers, I understand you have a meeting. Um, so right off the bat, and many departments are already doing this, mine and the Board of Selectmen's included, we maintain our own spreadsheets of our budgets. We, uh, start off the year, um, with a, with a template spreadsheet that allows us to track expenditures from each line, track the invoices. And then when we get our monthly reports from Mr. Lavilla, um, as required by law, we can manage them. We can also anticipate if there's a major, um, you know, a major problem, that something is just way off and needs to be addressed right away. So that's already happening. I shared this with the Board of Health, you know, earlier, I think this week, earlier this week. And I, um, anticipate and expect them to utilize that process. Um, I also suggested that instead of having kind of everyone all help out and pay bills, that it be restricted to one or two people just for better control. Sometimes too many cooks in the kitchen, um, doesn't help when you're monitoring a budget. Uh, so we, in our office, just for example, we split them up. Um, I do legal and Leanne's doing energy and public buildings, for instance. And I do know of other departments that do this. So I want the public to know that, um, there are other departments that do monitor their budgets and it's not a free-for-all. Uh, I plan on our next department head meeting, which is next week. It was supposed to be this morning, but we had to reschedule it for a scheduling conflict. To very much emphasize the fact that we are in still the middle of a pandemic, fiscal crisis looms. We have no idea what the state is going to offer us as far as local aid figures. Our chapter 90 reimbursement is pretty low at $302,000, which isn't enough. Um, it's never enough even in a good time. So I'm anticipating that we will see fewer dollars. I know the schools, um, you know, just the whole conversation about the schools. So it's a pretty grim picture that we're looking at. I know it is a pain in the butt, but we do not let anybody spend anything unless it is very, very cheap, a critical need or COVID-related. And then everything COVID-related is going into a deficit spent account to later on be requested for reimbursement through the FY '21 CARES reimbursement and then FEMA. Um, I made it pretty clear earlier as well, not tonight, but earlier in this year, that any work we're doing is probably going to be on a grant. Um, and just kind of preach this fiscal conservativeness that you can't just go buy a box of pens anymore because you're running low. Like it, you just have to wait. Um, so things that we prioritize are sanitizer. And all of this will be said at the department head meeting, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. As far as Chris and myself, we haven't actually gotten together to be able to go over this, but Mike Hill here it now. Hi, Chris, sorry. Uh, my plan is I want to, um, you know, meet quarterly maybe at first, but then monthly during the springtime just to. just to verify that these budgets, I mean, I guess I have a bad habit that I just look at the, the percentage expended. And if I'm three quarters through the year and I see that it's at 70%, I generally think that it's okay. So I think I'm going to alter my own process to flag the lines at a lower percentage rate of expenditure. So things like that, small things like that, we can work on internally and then compare notes and raise any questions that we may have going forward. And then contracts, monitoring contracts that, I know that Jen had a spreadsheet. Linda had shared it with me and I think it's pretty overwhelming looking at it. So I'm just going to do my own to like restart and know where all these contracts are. And then also maybe funnel them through just one office. And that's what I have so far.
Good, good. Thanks. I would say that's, you brought up the contracts. That was one of the things that, you know, mine is, can we, especially the large contracts that we have, that we could have maybe a separate tab somewhere that shows on those end of month reports, the big contracts such as trash pickup, where it's at, what its monthly is, just so we can monitor it. Some of those, especially the big ones that have variables to them, that we, we need to see the variables. If something takes off, you know, you, we have, I don't know what the payment schedule is on that contract. You might have one that has a payment in July and then December, but in the middle it shows it's running on track, but all of a sudden that the, you know, there's double, it doubles up somewhere. So we just got to keep an eye on that. So, thanks, Mallory.
No, thank you. I agree. I think, you know, it happened and we're just going to prevent it from happening ever again.
Yep. So I think that's all the committee has. So Tom, if you guys want to jump off, you are welcome. Thanks for staying. Thanks for your upfront and candidness tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't anticipate it happening again.
All right. Thanks.
All right.
All right. Thanks.
Maybe back in the fall for more money if the, you know, if the, if the waste keeps going.
Good. I, that, that's okay. Just no surprises. So, Mallory, can you just pull the agenda back up for a second? So I can make sure I follow it through?
Sure. Oh, I didn't share. I didn't share. There we go.
So we covered old business, new business. I guess, so Chris, are we on track on the close now that we've done all the transfers?
We will be. Yes, sir. We've got a couple of, so one of the things specifically related to the overtime and Board of Health, but there were other budgets where we're going to have to reclassify COVID-19 related expenses over to the CARES Act and the, in the, in the FEMA grant accounts. That's based on recommendation from the DOR. That lets us close the books clean on free cash that way. So we still have another week, we still have another week to pay fiscal 20 bills right now. So we can pay bills through next Wednesday. Once, once that's done, my, my expectation is, is that we'll have a balance sheet and free cash certification, not later than August 31st, which would actually be pretty good for me, considering I'm now here on a full-time basis, whereas last summer I was only working basically one day a week.
Yeah. What is the state, how's the state's speed edge certified? I don't know. It's early. I mean, I have to believe they're going to be behind.
No, no. If, if it's early, they'll be good, except I, I'm going to make one caveat, Mr. Chairman. There are a lot of communities that delay their town, their, their annual town meetings. So they could be tied up with that for a little bit. But I, I expect if I get it in early, they'll prioritize it and they'll get us done.
Okay. Sounds good. Any, any questions in the committee before we wrap up?
I have a quick question. Do, is anybody going to come in and sign these documents?
I, I can. We'll talk afterwards. I, I can, we can figure that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Chris, do we need a new signature authorization or not until after we reorganize?
No, not until after you reorganize. That'd be the best thing. Okay?
Okay. All right. So if anybody has any names, we really, Mallory, if anybody says anything, send it to the entire committee.
Sure thing.
And we'll call another Zoom meeting to appoint one, because we really need to fill some spots. And so if anybody, anybody that wants to serve, bring them up.
I heard one name. I heard one name. Mr. Patrico told me last night. So I'll reach out to that person and then try to gather some, some more.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. We need a new clerk.
Peter was great.
Peter's, Peter's put his time in as clerk. He doesn't need to do it anymore. See, hey, Robert, I covered you this time.
Yeah, you did.
I always used to like to go back to you.
Yeah, you, you covered me. Yeah. What about, what about like the roughly two years before that, though?
Well, we've all done it now.
Yeah, we, we have all done it, so.
And I'm the worst one. So you don't want me to be the clerk. We'll never have that. So, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you, block. Thank you. We thank you. We thank you, block. And they glow in the dark.
Kevin, how was your birthday?
How was your birthday?
Gray and a dark painted box and they glow in the dark.
Nice.
They glow in the dark?
Yep.
Did you shut the lights off on mommy so she could show her how it closes the dark?
No, the sun has been like slowly going down and then he shuts the light, the hall's not coming in, or shut the door. So, all right.
Have a great night, guys.
Night. Thank you.